I am a program And in my program I am here to introduce you to the people Because I am a programmer And in my program I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people So I am here to say I am here to introduce you to the people About this security This is a new This is a new I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to say If you want to hear about this I am here to tell you Hello
I am here to tell you 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 I am here to tell you
Because of my work I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people
I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people But even if I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people And I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people
Okay, hello I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people
Except you build a house The builder builds in vain Me I go follow you there
I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people Water specialty professional Away designer H T A Away designer R U Z I A R O K E T A I am here to introduce you to the people All the roots I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people
Duma Duma You are taking me higher My life is for your glory Your glory You make the little things I do Be like Santa Pictino Your grace makes the difference Just they embarrass me oh I like it oh I like the way you dey lead me oh Promotion everywhere Contract everywhere Plenty money everywhere Cause you dey lead me every day I say I like it oh I like the way you dey lead me oh Sheina Duma 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 Jesus you are taking me higher You never leave me no forsake me Sheina Duma 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 Sheina Duma Jesus you are taking me higher Jesus Jesus My life is for your glory Your glory Except you build a house The builder builds in vain Me I go follow you there Anywhere you lead me I go go My life is for your glory Your glory Sheina Duma 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 Me I go dey follow you oh Follow you oh Follow you oh Jesus My life is for your glory Glory You make the little things I do Be like Santa Pictino Your grace makes the difference Just they embarrass me oh I like it oh I like the way you dey lead me oh
I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people He will I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people
I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people Malaysia's law I am here to say That vast area of land that is beyond the water I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people Where we are I am here to introduce you to the people
Okay, fine
I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people
I am here to introduce you to the people Then he went out to the village Then I was in the village But not when I met you Then alone The same man he met But even if he assisted you He was out to the village He was out to the village Always I met you Out to the village That is where you learn life Resolution Focus You understand I can't speak for you You can't hear You can't hear Focus, you can't hear You can't hear But what do I mean That guy you read When you say you don't mind you I don't mind you now You couldn't have anything Because now you're going before Now it's you I was the T N C man Or whether I was What the issue You know what this is What the idea Make a good point What are you talking about What the logo Okay Okay, thank you Sorry for the interruption Come on, you have to finish I'm not happy I'm not happy So now I say Okay, I am here to tell you I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to tell you I am here to tell you And I am here to tell you 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 If I am here to tell you For what is actually happened Because then They will be kind to you When I am here to tell you 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 They talk about you And I am here to tell you I am here to tell you And if I live in Asia Every day So if I am here to tell you I am here to tell you That ever in question Of course I am here to tell you Then of course I propose Some semi-feminine Excuse me, excuse me I am here to tell you 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 Which means I am not happy about that Hey! You know that They will hear you say no work And I am here to tell you I am here to tell you I am here to tell you And they will say nothing Like more than I am here from home Of course I am here to tell you I am here to tell you Amen If you like You do what you like As I am here As I am here in town Of course First, you can hear the bugger Yes or no First, you can hear the bugger No, no, no! Hear the bugger, yes or no? No, I am here to tell you Of course I am here to tell you As I go in town You can't hear You can't hear You can't hear And I am here to tell you I am here to tell you What are you doing By generality By generality I am here to tell you I am here to tell you I am here to tell you Young guys Now you can hear Temple of the people I am here to tell you Because Young guys, I am a mad voice I speak here See, I speak here as a mad voice As authority in the limo Now, what did you say Not long ago Not today Thank you, sir How many will do? I am here to tell you I am here to tell you I am here to tell you I love this place Especially the American Central Area That ever The western part of the area And the research All over the world Other developed areas But any of these places Okay Information and the capture Okay, thank you I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people I am here to introduce you to the people Large-scale agricultural projects It's a good idea It's 5 hectares It's 10 hectares It's 20 Limbo will allow the people And you can plant it there It's a good idea But you have to come You will have to pay the price I am here to tell you I am here to tell you I am here to tell you Development of the people You will have to tell us I am here to tell you 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 Trust I am here to introduce you to the people Trust I am here to tell you This is the truth It must be real I am here to introduce you to the people
Oh, everyone You don't know I am here to tell you Why you are here You are here You are here You are here Hello Oriental Brothers International Go slow 98 Hello You do I am here to tell you You are here I am here to tell you 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 Yeah Hello Come on Come on there I am here to tell you 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 I am here to tell you
I am here to tell you I am here to tell you
I am here to tell you Amen, brother I am here to tell you It's a passado I am here to tell you I am here to tell you You may give me two Give me two At all, I am here I am here to tell you My ego has fallen It's a vision for my passion It's a pity to you At all, I am here After this, you will be At all, I am here This will pass you You will be here You will be here You will be here You will be here I am here to tell you You may You may see 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 At all, I am here Um, I am here to tell you 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 Because of the program It's very sad You are here to tell me I am here to tell you 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 President General Limotan Development Union Amen, brother I am here to tell you 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 You may be here I am here to tell you I am here to tell you I am here to tell you At all, I am here You may see But you are here to tell me I am here to tell you Man, you can do I am here to tell you I am here to tell you You may see me My eyes are clear My hands are clear My mouth is clear My body is clear My mouth is clear I am here to tell you 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 All if I have the program Of the best agenda of today I am here to tell you Before one hour thirty minutes A better job I am here to tell you I am here to tell you I am here to tell you Now, what's on I am here to tell you My mouth is clear My mouth is clear I am here to tell you I am here to tell you I am here to tell you My mouth is clear I am here to tell you My mouth is clear I am here to tell you I am here to tell you I am here to tell you Because I am here to tell you 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 So I am here to tell you 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 You may see I am here to tell you You may see I am here to tell you 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 So I am here to tell you 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 But if I am here to I am here to tell you Le mu, na nda ije, ike. Ta, ada nochi la anya, ta ra uve ta, ike. Daunu. Oyu CLTBU President General. Ekuwa ku manita. Abu ne ku siwa ku manita. Oye, gata atuka ma to wa ni mo. Ata ku juju, atuka ma to wa ni mo. Ko esu webe na ko esu gidu. Abu na kwasia, oye u ni mo. Epo ta, atu pa, hisse pasaro wa ni mo. Abu ne no, owe bukia. Ome siye, nena wo, obodoma layout, eba anye ke ta. Nena wo, baba, ebi no siye, kandisi weba no ku to. Oye poli ke webe, oye ta. Abu na asile ake si, blaka ka ije, blaka ka ije, aye ku ku eke aside. Ku eke wa ke anya, ku eka siweke, bata wa eke ni wa ke anya. Ku eke no wele, ku eke no foro, ku eke siye mia mia, ni ke kacha ike. Aba yepe bu ni mo ke. Ata koni te ni ne ta, ome tiso nezu, ome ku ka nezu. Oye ni mo obu na entice, oye ni wa ku pa pasaro, obodoma. Oyu CLTBU President General. Ekuwa ku manita. Abu ne ku siwa ku manita. Oye, gata atuka ma to wa ni mo. Ata ku juju, atuka ma to wa ni mo. Ko esu webe na ko esu gidu. Abu na kwasia, oye u ni mo. Epo ta, atu pa, hisse pasaro wa ni mo. Abu ne no, owe bukia. Ome siye, nena wo, obodoma layout, eba anye ke ta. Nena wo, baba, ebi no siye, kandisi weba no ku to. Oye poli ke webe, oye ta. Abu na asile ake si, blaka ka ije, blaka ka ije, aye ku ku eke aside. Ku eke wa ke anya, ku eka siweke, bata wa eke ni wa ke anya. Ku eke no wele, ku eke no foro, ku eke siye mia mia, ni ke kacha ike. Aba yepe bu ni mo ke. Ata koni te ni ne ta, ome tiso nezu, ome ku ka nezu. Oye ni mo obu na entice, oye ni wa ku pa pasaro, obodoma. Ni ku obu na 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 ku bu ku, oye obu na ke ku, oye obu na bo ni ni mo, aga oye obu na mayra ike bu ku. Oye ife nde na kini mo ku basi, ni mo mayra ike eba, kawa ya ta, siya ne ke ulewa bo riya. Abu no, oye zo ne ku ife na daro na, kwa basi ya siya ne ke ulewa bo riya, kani mo gaba ni ru. Ni fe kine ke koka la anya, ba no kari tu ke, lo ne siyo bu. Kani mo we gaba ni ru. Oyebu na basa bu ebe, no ebe, ota no ebe. Ba ba obu na, nu ku to ku ebe, ebe. Ni fa iki, si na obu na anye ke bu, ike lenle, obodoma anya, eba ike bu, owa land. It is DJ N'Owa Land. Ni fa iki eba, bu, iki wa ta, ni ka ba ta, ni ka eba, oye ta. Oye ke ku, ya anye ke le na ta. Ni fa iki to ku, ika ekele, ni ba la kele, ni ekele, oye eba. Abu na eke siye pele, iki oze ni ya.
Ife ke man.
Ife ke man, be awaji. Abu na awasi awaji, ife iki siye, bu piu di ni mo. Ipa wa, iku pu pa wa, iku piu di. Abu na tiu di eku siyo bu, atwa ite, oye ta, ma to wa. Abu mele eku siye, atwa ite na na wa, eba ma. Anye ke le ke ta, sebu, desia e, mia na e, na desina, ana eba ma. Abu na fa kwasia, na wa eba, emekasiya obu na, ne ba, oye leki duju. Abu na ni siya, ni siya, kwasia, ni ni ra ju, ya na ku di, eke program. Ni ke san to. Abu mele siye anya. Ome siye basi, e na ta na, ya lekele mechi, ome siye nozo ya yeke, no yekele, e mechi. Oye na ma tifetla eba, eke na. Ome tifo oso. Ebeu! Oyebu na, eba to. Oye ni ma, eba to. Oyebu na, eba to. Oye u ni mo. Oye ni ma, eba to, oye ni mo. Oye ni mo. Oye ni mo. Hello, hello. Oye ni mo. Diko, nde na pasmo tu. Emme arrangement, etaka pasmo tu, number eba, mother plot, London mad, yes. Diko, emme arrangement, etaka pasmo tu, mother plot, London mad, diko, diko. Ndema di bananati, ndema ni siyo tu. Diko, kende seku mi tu. Diko, plan ku, awes, jekep, agamete, ebe ku ma gebi, agamete. Diko.
Owe no ni wa ebe, oye, oye ma ta, eba ebe. Can you give them the leadership of people? You believe, see, ye, ye wa na, oka roye de me, oye mu ye de me, oka wa na, oka ro. However, okuha bu. Okuha wa ta, ewa wa lewa, eku ku, andani we the Panama States. You know what ku ha bu? Bukai, makwa ite, kaka, kakuwa juju, kasa juju. Emme, ebe, odi ka, kona leadership ni mo, eme teria. How may I go decide to see ya, ye ha kebe. Amo ba ndi, ome na no, ku na oka cha ro. Hayata, wa piya oku ma. But before emenyah, can you respect, po ni obu na no eba? Can you eba deba, apu mu di di chi ike. Apu na wa loa ikele. Barista tuzu, go go, esu go mado, mu ya ba lo kaka. Ota ku, place for ni mo, ya ku, kama niye ne ebe. Apu mu di oso, pa kacha eba. Iye no, owe de ni mo, ki we ba ta so, owa te awaji. Can you pu, ya oku ni na, you pu fa, na diya mu. Can you give them a way to break through that now? Self asinanda, onsinan, mu ka ye ni na, awani. O na ku oze anye mu, ayamasea diya owa ebe. But I have no clue so, we no mu mu, we no weke, na ba ta. One disrespect, of the one mu. So people know, I may be the, this program. This program, amaka, eme to the before anywhere. Bu na anya, unafuna, anye were the only senior advocate of Nigeria, not retired now. Mu ku ni retire senior advocate of Nigeria, the former leader of Panama States. Pa ma ipe kala anyi, sekafanya we, wa ni, opu ta. Eke ne mu no, ni mo will be greater after today, daunu. People call you a ba. Ni no, town hall meeting, oye na obu di chairman, pa pa obu di organizer, ba na wa ni mo.
No no, asimu boabo, mu boabo. Emekasiya, ba da, ekbe ekbe le nido. Ayewe ke ne chineke, maka no chineke me, ka e doan oba, no bosse ta ta. Ay no lo ku. Hmm? So ay eme ke si eme, na ke si ma, de bu, ebu ebu. Oye ona fonato, oye ona we wa angoli, we wa angoli. Oye si ku lo, oye la ku lo, oye si nebe nuwa obi ya na ni mo, oki ku ma si odi, odi obi mo ta. Kebe riya na ni mo, oka oviya chiachi, oka oka ni bu seki, oka oka ni yo be, oka oka riya chiachi. Boya, chineke ni ma, boy. Oye obu na, bi niye, to chineke, iye me wa du, iye me, ma maka chineke. Iwo oye ozu, please, ma maka chineke, iye na, ga lo si, ma maka chineke. Boya, chineke ni ma, boy. Oye odiya ma. Ni mo, boy, chineke ni ma, boy. Oye odiya ma. Owe e, boy, chineke ni ma, boy. Oye odiya ma. Woke, boy, chineke ni ma, boy. Oye odiya ma. Wani, boy, chineke ni ma, boy. Oye odiya ma. Ichi e, boy, chineke ni ma, boy. Oye odiya ma. Boya, chineke ni ma, boy. Oye odiya ma. Boya, chineke ni ma, boy. I salute you all.
Diko, I am a protest reverend for the, maxi, abu ku. Max news, abu ku, this of the, diko.
Oye ma iduro nuwa ni, oye ma ni, oye ku nu. Ose mu ba, she, eku ku ni ne. Anye ke neke, maka ni ne la ni, maka ni ne go ba ta ta. Maka nuwa ebe di to anewa, ni ke, oka nonu, ni ka, obe de. Awe na yeke na ku ni ne, ki ebe o, o. Oba ku go ba ta ta, oka pa no, mu te oye la ni, agamiro. Mu te oye la ni, oka ma de na ma de. Ay na yeke na ku ni ne. Oba ku go ba si, ke na, buki geti ya kani ya. Abu na, anye no se, no ba ku go ta ta. Kani we ike, muwa ne, luwa ta pu ike, maka bu da anye bu ni mo. Maka, ike kafa ke, agamiro ike ni mo, ode ma ka, hisse na christi, oye wa ni. Na fa na na wa, na monso.
Uh, chineke na. Ayi won di ni mo, ba ko leba ta ta. We si ka. Ayi, bank atadela anyi. Aywena yeke na, ebea, bu lo ni siyo tu, ni fa ne, eba ta. Bu da no, yo bu da. Ayu mele ota. Oye obu na oti biya. Awe na seke na. Ni kisi esi, ku mu manani, rapu di fu de me. Awe biya, apa su nu biya, fu ri fe, eku si webe, ni fa de ku, eku si ku, eku si me. Ay na yeke na. Ayi wasia, ba eka pasanu, do. Oye obu na, ka na ku biye nu, do, buru ba do, ra bu do. Awe na seke na, eka bu da la ije, chari ne. Ni na yepe, niye lo, oye obu na, ka, nu di di chi ike. Uh, esu me, ku na, ka, ee, akata. Abu na anya ota rota, chineke na, me, eme siye mi na, ayu mele ota. Uh, ifa obu ni mo. Anye ke ke, abu e mi da, anya abu e bu ba, agwa, agwa, abana. Owele ebo sa, e ma na kiri, ana, ku na, ni mo na, eba. So na, o, mu ma de cha, o ife de la ije, chari ne. Awe na se, oka na ye la ni, ku siye anyi, ku siye ota anyi, ku siye, oye obu na, nde ni mo. Ni we ne ta, ee na ye, oka, me si la ije, esu, esu ya. Oye ni mo.
Ni Motan Development Union. Abola zekele na ta bu. Chi, abola zekele na ta bu. Oye eki ike. Koba, iku ku koba, ifa kona anye ba. Abu ne ku siweku, ku koba ifa kona anye ba. Anye me efo oso. Ose fa ni ne. Ni mo eke na, olo. Ni mo eke na, olo. Ni mo eke na, zo olo. Oye ni mo. Oye u ni mo. Ni cheeps, niya ba na se, niya otsi se, oso. Our evil father, weapon of law. Oh, one name, from the neighbor. Asim, oh my, the angel, the mother of Jesus. Oye, e, oye pu ku, opa ta, omo, omo e, bu ku. Away from, oli fe, eba, eme de. My history, of most of the towns, the Panama States. My name is John. Ni mo. Both, and the name of a man, am I right? Ni mo, oba lo ma. And no ma da. As ni mo, agwa no, we de ni mo, odo si na name of a man. Are you never, I tell you the book. Owo fu na, I tell you this, well, abasa. Well, well, I look at. The way the people eat me, kaka, obu na ni mo, apostle, both. And the way the people eat me, obu na ni mo, I tell apostle one day. Ona ba ku, kata wa na, siha ba ba. Ona ba ku, kata wa na, siha ba ba. One day, a one day, ma ka, ni ma ni mo. Ma ka, agamiro ni mo. Ma kerti. Oye na, owa sa, boss neba, obu na eba, water odi. Maka ra lo, la ka la ba. Maka ka, ebe se, no no ba. Oye, owo ku, ku pa swali, bro, so si fa ole.
Ifa amibeha Oh You stop on the way, eh beni mwa na Eh diyeh Eh yemal de ay duwe na yehki Eh beni peo kolo peya Nyea me, amale yafo Oh gusele ngai sebo kolo peya Manai, ife ki po ta ba de Ifa ane me Eh kenekana, toka ngai bozini Beni eh organize Eh ma omaka Oh wo dihwa isri wa amaka, iku iwa omakiya Isina ojo ko, uwe ki ku iha ojo kiya Eh tuan isin ma kola tana timo Ah eh long time ma bo ba, fudun la kodi eh tuan So tuan eho ke ne, eh be bukunu buye lundu beni fa organize Oh wo na eh disociety, arane uwe Ndikwenu nande jono All part of growing up Oh wo na Nigeria eh ma eh ke ta Eh buku si ke Nigeria ma bo So di mo ga apu, god This strong god Oh wo eh ra eh pele ya, atana timo amana ka deyiru Mo ke ya, mo muaka Oh ni tu ta Eh we ya la, oh no Oh wo eh de chibo di mo Di fo so ko bo tu re po Ni bo kolo Ay wele Disagreement Ndikwenu na la koro Oh ka two stages Ni bo ma bo Oh wo eh de chibo go di mo Eh yamun na we sa le ke Ah chicha, ni bo ma bo So ana me ke ne In a special way Ndika organize de ifa Oh ma ay juju Ana yo ta shawa, ay jo ay jo Part of private di yehmo, I'm ready to answer that question Oh yo oh wo na be free To ask any question Eh tu ne uwe, eh be no ne uwe we Ay cha wo uwa ne Eh yeh cha ay juju, siya kabo de Disagreement from part of life Oh wo na eh si Uwe isina Ife di ne ana gasu, with that disagreement It is also a part of what we call democracy Oh yo oh wo na bro che My majority vote will carry So, I never have a problem na di mo Who do follow eh pa weh problem I am here to answer, ke na bo se buza Eh kuwe Manai, ay juju oh wo na Eh yo oh wo na tu ne uwe, eh ba ino we ne we Eh ba no, boi landi mo Oh de sek, oh wo ne ba na asetono Eh ba ka nuwe kuwe juu, ne we we di mo So eh yeh cha ay juju Ni ne, who do we we sa li we Mo wo na ya konke Na konke Siya wo bo, oh muazi Ah wo ta shawa bo So eh ni ya cha ay juju, chukuma di bo ihi la bo Ma ka ka de tu We ke ka de ku Oh wo lo we lo we de ay juju ay juju Ife di na ka na ni Si juo ne uwa na ba Oh wo eh bo de Ana, as I said eh ke le bo mo je Oh lo this meeting, ka je we lundu di bitna Everybody is entitled to ask question Oh yo oh wo na, cha de ay juju, nyah joa And walking and wine Ka you we we, eh ke eh ka de you Oh wo si wa na di organize de la, bitna We eh beba toke, iti kuwe de Fa kuwe, ka you we ka ba deyiru De lo, ay yo si, as you wele Ka Oh be lezi, be kapde di dupe Eh na kawo se, kawo se kata ya Oh wo eh wele ni mo 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 Oh wo eh bo na na wa na, ta pa eh tu wa Ni bo na na ri ka basa, ta na wo na ni ke bu ba Oh wo eh bo ni cha wo na Oh wo eh be di da Oh wo na bo, boi boi ku Oh wo na bo ta, ku ya bo You, ama you sata Oh wo ru ya sata Oh wo udi bo ya sata Pidi di bo ya sata Pidi, na kuwe, ya to kuwe Oh wo na si, na yeha ye po wo, na yehi ka de Oh wo na, oh wo na na we de kuwe si We ba, di ba di ba Na ya ma, ato di ba de Na ya ma, ato di ba de Oh wo na de po ha ta Oh wo na we de ya fo, ye ki di ya Ki po di Oh wo eh, na ya ma, na ya ma By way motion By way motion, by guarantee, people Eh na na la ba, bu ku de chiya And do not attain na ni So eh na di ba bo bo Mano na la di, na di waso, ay asimba Mano for now, people, I can't believe it Semfora, people Mano eh de ta, people are going to Oh wo eh, eh na di Ni eh ke de, chibo People, manan eh ke de Chibo, and eh de de Eh people be used And you can go swear to you Ah ba ye ne wo ka di ba Preca But that, I don't can go swear to be used Nde na, nde na Eh weh oh for this meeting Eh dihwa na meeting, I'm going to do more Ah la 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 Because, because Because, eh weh oh for this meeting But that, I'm your champion Ne wa unti, oti na tura nima I'll catch you eh, and eh 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 weh oh for this na People for this na, eh me si na, go eh Ha wo eh, no bo wa, no tu wo no ke, no to be used Weh eh be, weh oh for this na Get someone to, go no wa no Reason, eh weh oh for this na Oh wo na wo ni mo, eh buku wa fire back Weh si na, eh ba wo na, ay joa juju Oh wo na wo ni mo, eh buku, ye wo buku Eh my program Eh my program Oh wo eh, I eh me si, push on and answer Eh me man go mad to microphone Manai because, I know I appreciate The fact like na, the dignity of ni mo Chokoka yo, oh ba ya do wa di ba West Kyja, no ko mo, go do na bu de Eh me ro wo na di ba Eh me la di ba Oh wo no wo si siha ke da Guka wo anosi, ye weh kuwe di ru Oh wo si wa no bu kuwa, bu kuwa Mano wo eh wa ka ya Si weh ni eh, why yo Ni di ina daleta, mina pa bu si lo Fast ni ba to bu, peace, they no bad na ni Oh wo na ne, place where they, and eh me ta no Haya, papi ya eh, eh, oh wo wo eh bu de Si ye wo peace eh chats Di ko, di youth, oh weh ko no wo Oh wo eh di ninety years, that were kolo de Ni eh di eh And you ma, the Dignity, the anger, ana si wa deyiru ma ya Oh wo ne, oh wa, wa ke ne, wo wo ne I can help you whatever On that note Ana, I want to tell, people are bad person and answer Mano eh me, ye ma amaro Eh wo eh ye ma amaro, salam no wa Eh wo eh ye ma amaro, mu na kanata So after lu, ka kowa do the history Ta ta, eh rich go ta ta, oh peace, and eh look like eh ni After lu ka kowa the history of a no wa Akowa ta sean ya Some eh de, eh weh ku, iha oma Bar salo, eh si weh di lo weh le ba no wa Eh weh la prove, oh eh weh la prove Oh wo eh, putas ya Eh me si ya na, oh ni mo ni ne Eh me si ya na, oh ni mo ni ne, ah jo de ya juju Eh wo eh ni weh, anta opiniya, eh ku On that note, because Oh wo eh ni Come on do, today And, and you ma, no na pu eh di obu His speech today, no si na na pu eh di obu After ah mo, oh wo eh eh little bit Of the history of a no wa, otus weh, goa tiya For a new one amaro, eh ilota Eh mo ah bo na, um kota lande na no wa Oh wo eh, wo eh Wo 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 eh, oh wo eh Ka wo ah de ku Agala na ta, wo ah ka de I don't want to waste my time As I told you earlier Oh wo eh, the ninety, weh ba Eh ah wo go de, eh Mu ah putak, ah wo Because, chukuka do de, nde do Ifa weh da, I have a duty to stay the truth Eh yamal, eh ku okhe, si correct And what I ask Oh wo eh, for years, eh ay joa What is your problem, weh eh pea ro de Ah wo from eh be de, eh tu na Eh si, oh wo eh, eh na ro You are free to ask any question Joa mo, oh na ma na ma za wo si Eh kuwe na ma ma za Eh wo ne, be se po Because, eh kuwe lo Ah ipe lo, ka de bo isina, ka deyiru Oh iwa iha Ah ipe lo, ka de bo iska de Oh wo eh, ya si le ku lo Eh wo ne, be se po Oh wo eh, ne mo lo, na eh To te, eh ke le bo mo ye, oh de si Eh me we lo, si bitna Oh de be si Oh ni mo sa ifa The six shanti mo te, eh to te ya fo Eh wo eh, mo se ya fo Di fo, oh wo eh, ya oh wo na, na biya mi Oh, FBS, eh executive, eh ba Ana omi But eh ye weh lo this type of crowd Eh wo eh, di be se, ba ba ba, eh de wo Be se, eh wo, why no Eh yeh cha ay juju, joa Eh be free Oh wo eh, le wo di we Eh wo eh, eh bo si weh le we Then di la, ke ya wo But ah wo eh, oh wo I'm ready to text, ask us Question Oh wo eh, mani pele we, ke ya wo Eh be ro wo Um Eh yeh cha ay juju
Thank you very much People create sinners People talk amda re ta People go bo na Oh wo eh, so eh eh Oh ta, oh ta eh, oh bo bo, eh me ta re we Oh wo si lo wo Ka kowa eh ser, na no wa So yo oh wo, so eh, ka kowa wo si amda re And no wo weh kowa, da wo Uh, thank you very much
History of our war Very good Because, ay yama yamo Mishe na, oh wo eh kuwe I think I'm used to, ne uwe, nyo za Oh ayana Our war Was a town, oh bo de na lo uwe Eh tu ni weh si weh na Eh siya weh na no Abasha no Aba A town of its own Ife weh ta le si mo Ni mo Na wa Bonna Oh wo eh, oh ta Our war eh eh Oh muazi, weh de bo ku poa koko befa Ana, po ke di alon mo, na befa Weh ye bo ku poa koko Nde, our war Were poisonous, na many of the children Were a family Na di mo Ah ba da na phio Oh, eh ba ka ni mo no we we Weh no, emergency meeting Emergency meeting di mo Amro ku itwa eh siha no Na oh kolo ma de, ne mo ne Nde ze nozo Bahana to la ta, tabu si Wa ni weh la eh ne Ah, eh tu po wa Oh ta po wa, wa re ta Eh na ka di Eh yo da be tiho Bo se ha ta Eh weh eh ke bu lo, oh wo befa Oh sosu Oh wo wa ya fa Bo so So te ah bo ta Na Oru ku Ta olo poa ka ba Mashe a oru ku Mashe, na fe eh deka Oru ku weh weh da Eh ba na po, Amada Amada be big village, oru ku The land eh, our war, mashe eh ba All over the place Ano wa eh na po, aro ku Aro wa Oh, eh tu po wa, oh za ba si Aro, eh du Eh tuan, our war si lo ba sa chasi Ni mo eh, ala na ba Ah ni mo se Eh yo oh wo na, ye na wa kobe Eh weh si kobe Eh ne na kuwa, oh to bo Ni chukun, eh chiya kuwa zo, eh la kuwa da Eh, ano wa si, eh wo de eh weh amo wa Oh ni eh weh
Yes, thank you, thank you
Ah wo po, ni na na, wa ni mo Ba wa ne bo Ma ta si du Ma ni, wo ru Wo eh, di di ye na na kuwa Eh wo eh, na na kuwa, eh si na na, eh we Ga no eh, eh na na, eh po Oh wo eh, eh we Oh ni eh we, oh wo Oh ni eh we, eh na Ah la Eh si ni mo, eh na na, eh po Oh wo eh, eh na ka di Ni mo You are in the room, a little, please eh Oh wo eh, ni mo Nande cabinet Uh PG Nande National officers Nde ze no so Nne ma mano No Nne ma mano Yo Nne ma mano Yo Oh wo eh, po lo ke eh ke ne wo no Oh wo eh, po lo ke eh ke ne wo no Oh wo eh, po lo ya eh ke ne wo no Because Eh bu kiye Bu pasan No, ano Ka eh ya le eh tono No, unpo wa Ka eh ya di ne yo Oh wo eh na yo Ka, oh wo eh, usi weh yo Ka eh wo eh, opele ndidi Bu du ke eh monte Oh ah ma, ni mo, ka mo ma buku Oh wo eh, eh ku lu, na de ro ma Eh yo ah si si tu fu, oh wo ah ma si tu fu niya Weh na yo, bu du ke eh si Makana, ayen cha bu, bu fu Eh nan ya la kam po wa Mo pa ni wa na lo Lawa Eh ke, ka ba lo Bu ku de ma Let out, our land eh ni mo Ni mo Oh wo eh, ka wa ka eh ni Eh tuan si po lo No ni mo ni ne Weh awa Oh ro ka Oh wo eh, yo na na ka ya ka ma Makana Eh ba oh wo eh, pa lo ke ta Oh wo eh, lo we Ni mo Walande, no so poa ba de de Ah wo po Na nineteen thirty-two Ah ba ah bo ma da ne, ah wo go lo wa, manai ba ke ta Ni mo Na, no so po Weh ke eh pe Eh weh eh be se, ni mo, weh eh ku No ni mo, tu wa wa And no ni mo, weh awa Ah wo eh, tu eh ni ba wa Eh ye ke ne ba na po, National Archives, di ne ubu Eh apa, po ba manea So ifa ane uwe, apora, apu ku uro Ni wo eh, eh de kiye na upo De kiye, na National Archives So people, ka ni Go ta nea, eh tu awa Di ta Di ta Oh wo eh, usi weh Eh ni na na, po no wa Bu ni mo si fa, po ba Oh wo eh, guarantee Ga, guarantee, ah Oh wo eh, ma bu lu ke ta Oh wo eh, ma bu lu ke ta Oh bu lo ma Oh bu lo ma Na Oh bu lo ma, na wa du we eh ke Na Ayah ma la, eh na Oh wo eh, wa du ye ba, eh ya wo pe, eh we ro Wo eh, eh di tu siha, siya na Oh na na Oh ye chi, ana Weh, di me ku Do ma ta po wa, oh wo eh, da de one hundred years Eh wa po se de Oh ye si pa wo ma da, na po na Mbo eh, di shea, oh ba poa ye Oh si pa la na, ye ye weh ya ya Oh wo eh, tu se de
Oh wo eh
Oh wo eh na na
Oh wo eh na na
Man, manai, eh si ni ba ne eh me lo Mbo eh deka Mbo eh I'm a warrior. 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 Because I'm a warrior. 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 So. Even if I'm a warrior. 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 Even if I'm a warrior. Boom. Even if I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Yeah. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. You're a warrior. You're a warrior. I'm a warrior. You're a warrior. Then. Then, as far back. As two thousand and six. As far back. As two thousand and six. For you, I'm a warrior. A warrior. A warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Abraham. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. As far back as two thousand and six. Can you imagine? A vertical design. And plotting. Of a warrior. Even if I'm a warrior. 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 In two thousand and nine. In a general assembly meeting, a warrior. And when I report. My class of class. A warrior, I'm a warrior. Where, yeah, directive. See, I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. On one. Two thousand and twelve. To be precise. I'm a warrior. National Executive Meeting. I'm a NPS. NPS, I'm a warrior. Meeting now. I'm a warrior on the seventh of April. Two thousand and twelve. A warrior. A warrior. Where, I'm a warrior. Now, I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Now, I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Now, I plot. A warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. On one. The seventh of April. And where. Emergency General Assembly in two thousand and twelve. Now, I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Where, I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. In a executive meeting. Or. Or based on that. I'm a. Chief. Warra, the chief of the. I'm a warrior. More President General, a warrior. And we set here up. If I, or technical implementation committee in two thousand and twelve. I'm a warrior. My class. Plotting. And selling of our land. To a warrior. To a warrior. By. I'm a warrior. Thank you, my friend. Thank you, my friend. Thank you, my friend. I'm a warrior. 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 And we set here up this technical committee. Even if I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm the chairman. Of that committee. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Even if I'm a warrior. Both is AJC Urinsu. Professor Joy Obase. Surveyor Emeta Uliobi. Surveyor Mike Umili. Chief Mike Achururu. Mister Anselm Alatwanya. And Chief Frank Anthony Iwota. Again, there is so rest in peace, oh man. If I buy this committee, I'm a warrior. But to work out. Waterities. For the development. And the sale of our land to prospective applicants. All of this in that committee in two thousand and twelve. That is eleven years ago. Committee is not a warrior. Committee is a warrior. On one. December, two thousand and twelve. Committee is a warrior. Eternum reports. Eternum report, I'm a warrior. Committee. And I'm a warrior. We're seeing it is easy. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Now, I'm a warrior. It's easier than that. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. And I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Most of the time. But I'm a warrior. And there's a clearance where I go. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. So, my name is wrong. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Even if I'm a warrior. On one. Now, Reto Galaga. Twenty twenty. Very good. Twenty twenty. And where, I'm a warrior. And where. But I'm a warrior. And the blue committee is easy. I'm a warrior. The warrior. Every. Every, it's a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Over send their application. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. My name is a warrior. I'm a warrior. And where, I'm a warrior. We're seeing now, I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Eleven years ago. I'm a warrior. Eight years ago. Papa, so do I. For Chief Anthony Osoyinobi. I'm a warrior. Chief Ike Abraham. I'm a warrior. Chief Emmanuel Dubisi. I'm a warrior. Chief Emeta Uliobi. Surveyor. The chair. The chair. Jesse. Oh man. Chief Vons. And the way. Chief Peter Ibita. I'm a warrior. Chief Dubisi Obi. Chief Nande Anyedobe. Chief Matthew Oyana. The president of Elago. Local election. Our current PG. Joya. As the one name Patrick Elmo Palo. For Secretary of the Committee. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. This is a committee is easy. Yeah, never mind that. Unfortunately, not a committee. We're seeing about you, the warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Chief Ike Abraham. Chief Tony Osoyinobi. Chief Peter Ibita. And Chief Nande Anyedobe. See, I'm a warrior. Where I'm a warrior. Ego committee, I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Now, the next thing. Even if I'm a warrior. The warrior. Now, it is easy. I'm a warrior. But he may survey it, I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Ego, they know. American survey hour. I'm a warrior. Surveyor Emeta Uliobi. Both a member of the committee. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. The warrior. I'm a 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 warrior. Yeah, I'm a warrior. Now, this is a warrior. Go see a warrior. Go see a warrior. Now, this is a warrior. Yeah, I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Perimeter survey. Man. I'm a warrior. Even if I'm a warrior. 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 Composite survey plan. Even if I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. The warrior. I'm a warrior. But he may design. Of the layout. A warrior. A warrior. Now, I'm a warrior. 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 The PG, he's a warrior. I'm a warrior. See, Papa Arla. My father, I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Now, design is a warrior. I'm a warrior. See, I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Man, I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. See, I'm a warrior. See, a warrior. See, committee, I'm a warrior. Committee. Committee. Where I'm a warrior. And where I'm a. And where I'm a design. Now, design now. Can I set for that? Even if I'm a warrior. A warrior. I'm a warrior. I'm a warrior. Even if I'm a warrior. 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 Equal to. Seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty square meters. Then, I'm a medium density. In town, I'm a. Nine hundred square meters. And where low density. Equal to one thousand two hundred square meters. And where executed plots. Equal to one thousand nine hundred and fifty five square meters. And where commercial plots. Equal to two thousand four hundred to two thousand four hundred and fifty square meters. And where's your industrial plots. Equal to five thousand square meters. I'm a warrior. How many plots can I wear a warrior? High density plots. The seven hundred. Medium density. The two hundred and eleven. Low density, two hundred and seventy-one. Executed plots, eighty-six. Commercial plots, forty-seven. Industrial plots, thirty-five. And where's the plots, I'm a warrior. I'm a public use plots. Abo republic news plot. Nepe. Uwe to da ekile bu yu. For sports. Nepe ayalo na uko. Ma primary ma seven three. Nepe ayalo no kani chi chi. Wey dele siakaba. Ewa kota plot uni yede de wa. Equal debo one thousand. Three hundred and sixty two plots. Anye weina anya. Wesi yes. Na plot uni na. Na na ni na. Bu ni mo wey. So na yeye. Eto ezi we baluni mo udu. Awe pichi ego ne. Allele each plot. Can you example? Plot opeka se lenpe wa. Bo high density plot. High density plot awa. Equal de na one hundred. Bo one and half plots. Ime tine ye. Bo trend billion. One hundred. And ten thousand. Negality, negativity. Anye we kupwa. Na plot omo lelele wa. Na ye wa kota. Five hundred thousand naira. Puye, puye na kani yu. Aye gi. Aye gi. Wena alo omo la ni mo. Ne, ne, negality. Negality. Awe kupwa. Awe kupwa. Na. Because no ni mo wa na wa. Awe kupu yu nyaa. Omo nu nu kia keta. Unka ino eba. Nu nu kia keta. Oye kia keta. Na na ni opposi pa wa. Omo na ye ye kia obuti lope. Awe de na kani. Ike na na ike de na kepe. Awe pa plot sudiwa wa yeye wetan. Less than four million. Mana, ma. Ego. Unka noa, unka noa lele three point one. Anya ka ezi we lozo. Anya ka ezi wete noapo. Anya ka ezi wete yekini. Iden happy. Na puki ni na anye. Jalo na awa no totoa. Wesi la anya pa wefo. Na committee alu ni go alu. Epo also, epo also yeme no. Epo also yeme no. Bo na. Because na anye di go. Ka ezi we epido omo. Awe epa. Na. Price example kota alu. Na ayu kupu ba ni yu kupu. Wesi na opo na ele twenty percent. Of the plot. And a, a my cost with the price. Because that twenty percent. Ya yani enough cash flow. Omo na. Omo na inela lea ye wepe noa yema. Ayapo city center anago. Arise. Arise ni yu. Mani no kudo yu. Mani na na Nigeria. Nele donation. Nele donation. Ego fa baloko we pata. Mana. Ego ayene wetan anawa. Aba yu ku ku. No omo wa na oke ta. Ano ni mo wey. O ni mo niye. Ka na oleya. Ayu ku ku. Na omo opo na. Anya lo industrial plot. Ma kawa. Na pawa ro. Apa kobe ku. Ebu rebu anyama. Na pawa ro. Na ye ye for every plot. Na ye ye ni yu ki two thousand.
What is fifty thousand?
Ye na we kupwa. Doja provalo industriya wa. Compete. Na the other star. Na oye wenatan. Opaka tanpe fifty percent. Of a day award lewa. Ye si na ni mo. Efa ane omo. Efa ane omo. Ayu da pawo. Ayu da pawo. Ayu da pawa siya na ni mo. Ne we we inoan. Koni nizi ni mo. Nizi ni mo siya anye na tumaku anye. Amaka anye kabani yuru. Awe panyazian. Ewe no omo. The poor piano omo. Alpha Greenness. ML maka industrial plot. Eta bayaniya. Omo na ye ye la lewa. Asai noa. So na edegi na uko. Sai noa. And oye me na yamuru. Oso ze. Ego ne epusi lebo omo, negativity. Let our soon finish. Our soon finish. Our soon finish. Anya omo. Yefelwa. Emeka ma na yaya ba. Omo, omo na kana pawa si reyaba. Omo na kana pawa si reyaba. Nasiya. Ya duan. Pa pawa ro. Epa wa nindazo. Eh? Pa. Alu. Pa wa. Koka aleya. Mu ku yu. Ye peyi. Mu ku. Pe ni nizi no. Pe ni. Mu ku. Ayu da pawo. Na. Awa ka lozo. Wa pata, wa pata. Ema wa lozo. Emo falebi lebo. Ego eko ta. Olo fu ku. Ayu ku bridge. Analo. Ikaya kwa ma ka bridge awa. Ku ku. Ku ku. Mana. Omo na. Omo le jo e lo omo. Komi pe, oye my fellow. Anye nenki ba na o design. Anye nenki ba na o design. Ayu kota consorts. Vele yene. Analo na wa. A design yu yu design. Awe na uko. Ayinayso. Efe si we design ye. Wena wea. Kade wena we stay. Mwe me se lo. Mwe me se lo. Designer layout. Well ma kisiya plot. Omo ni diya ba wa. Plot uni yede diya ba wa. Eighty year people. Awe number. So yu ni ba na o. Percussion sobe. All the people's, all the plot. Are now become with numbers. As at. As at today. As at today. Contract. Edegu la wa. Na anawa. Pokalo. One billion. Three hundred and eighty one million naira. The total strength of roots of Kawa. Bo ten point five kilometers of root. Omo na ni ma rapi. Internet edega guku. Jekena lukunu fine ya out. The average cost. Ediya lo. One kilometer of root. In Nigeria today. Ash fat. Ku lewa amazi allo. Ma uketi committee na o ni mo. Maneliyo pa na lo omo. Then. Out of this money. Omo contract orsono putakulu. Ay, ay proo ku ya. De na seven hundred and sixteen million. Omo na nde na si. Nele kobo anawa. Omo nen. Ela pa ho. Ela pa ho. Ife yena. Ife plot si we la noa wa. De na si we bakuru. Bo one thousand three hundred and sixty two. The total number of plots ele go na wa. Bo ninety four. Ninety four. Iche eke ya. Iche eke ya. Epo yelo. Epo yelo bo seven percent. Seven percent yu kene go. Men you know. Men you know the breakdown. High density. The seventeen. Million density four. Low density nineteen fourteen. Commercial tweet. Ku nu na anya ku na omo na. Ifa kayele. Alela rona. Alela rona. Olu leku anya. Ku na omo. Na. A quarter plan de no wa. I said I don't like here. Awa ro. Awe. The plot so. Plot uni yena. Negality. Plot uni yena. Ife ala palea. Ego kaka. A back committee. Ediya uni keni na. Bo nine hundred million naira. Ayu ni kapa takuru. Awe na si si. Kesi si ezi we spend day go inoan. Oye kia kase kadia. Kakowa omo. Aba muru. Na engage in consorts. Produce your design. Yene na na loe ba wa. Consorts fifty. Potalo forty one point two million. Then the contract orsona. Na omo na lozo. Epo potalo. Abo go pa. Bo seven hundred and sixteen million. Mwe. Mwe. Ayu go loa. So many parts of a wa. Bu kutu to kia. Kutu to kia. Efu cha lo. Epo oi boi boi toya. Mana. Tupu epido. Odeka. Nakata pi ayaya kia. Wa omo. Sobe yeme no. Wene open up the roots. Oye open cha up the roots. Before contract koya lozo. Ewa eka. Da le open up roots. Omo na nde kosi le ike. Omo na nde kosi le ike. Ayene in shock. Na omo na koli ike. Nebe akwa lozo. Na kulea uko. Ike yu ni di de wa. Ano oka compensation. Then. Anya ra lo go. Anya ra lo go peace ya. Anya ra lo go peace committee. For three years. Le go station arras. Le go computers. Le go printers. Na posala. Ife aspendi go na office expenses. Wewe omo. Forty point one million. Ayu go ni mo de na. Omo efo na oka. Project vehicle. Tupu. Ewe. Tupu we. Nasiya wa. Lozo. Ife ba wa di marri beki mo. Siyili bi. Ige boi omo. Ayu weywe. Weywe dipe inspection. Weywe na li ba de contract orsona. Then we di na office. Li diwa omo. For administrative runs. Ike ni ya. Kono la ML. Anya kia. Karani. Ni mo yeye a program. So yeme ni omo. Bo na. Ike na minutes. Yu ni den de we ba ya kia. So ana ju. Ke noya si si meenka. Ke noya si si meenka. Ode na fu ko no ni mo si si meo. Then. Aba muru. Maka bridge. Analo. Ya le diwa. With mbo. Omo na. Omo na. Injera mbo. Kanade ya. The more than drop of our patents. Obo doma noa. Efa ezi we na weya. Efa ezi we na weya. Bo na ma no omo nde. Na konyi. Na koro noa wa. Eso pu no ni mo wey. Na omo na ni mo di shock. Ni we wo lo pa na pa. Ma no, ma no mo we na anye. Omo we na anye na koro wa. So part of the program. Of the committee. Bo na ose a prekya ma. Omo na chole po omo. Ni mo awa niya de ba wa. Oye na po. Oso ni bi biye. Opo se lo. Na epe committee ba yu di do. Le bo doma. Na. O bo doma omo wa kau. Epe, epe committee ba yu kama e seroku. Eba ba yu di do na wa. Niye le di de ba apoka compensation. Na opo se lo. Na dena kalo ye akar posse. Ma yeye lava no totoa. Ayu ona kawi. Iki temwa dena kalo. Oka wa kwa kaya posse. Makana. Makana. Most of the land. Ake eleye. Ni mo le. Ni bo le bo, akere bidongo. So, mkuwe, eh wele ni bi lu se le plots. Oma ya na po ite ba wa, oh ya se ebe. Na ise ebe, de biye, bo na ija po bi lu, de muwa, from the land, maka no, ni bo we. Ni ya na po ba wa, so wa na na wa. Siye eh be prekya ba, po niya pa, le so lo we we la ni. So eh wele who knew approach, le ehi de ebe. Then, makana, makana, ife eki ku, ayega pononti, ayena no po ni fa eki ku. Oma lo, ke si we ku, ke ni na Patalo, eh go, eh le Patakulu. Na na wa, eji we we liye, wele na loe si ni wa kia. Ma nee ba ta ni be ni bo, eh ti ma ke ye lo kisi ebe ni. Oye, oye to la di drama, ju le siwa di jo. Oe se ka po mulu. Now, part of the comprehensive plan. Ah, na ele po ta, eh go na po ta, eh we na lo. Aba mulu, na na, nele ro nele, eh eje na lo, akaka ka. Mana, oppona, iki biye, we epi no wa ta wa. Opponi iki le epi no wa ta wa, you cannot sell more. O, oye cholo, ane, eh po oi ya po, oppona na lo wa, awa etan yo di, eh wele ego, ayega po ta si, eh we jaya ya, wele, eh wo kaka ni be ni bo. Ayegu po lu, de pononti. Ayegu po lu, na eh ma, na ni ebo si, isu we we lo, awa. So ba kaka na, ino kasa de de no thanks, ni be ni bo. Ni de kota, ni de kota omo na, la de mpo, oma eki ku, de si keka mampaa. Le eba, le eba ni di na dea kota. Ayega si ebo, ayaya na lo. So, so, tuku, tuku, we lo ke, ato kan yo, gata wa, rota. Na, iwe ni na eh ebe, go, for the best interest of ni bo. Ni de mba, ni de mba na po teno, we eki fa na loe ba wa. Na, tu e se, ke no de pride ni bo ya government. Government iki we kia, na no si eba na ni bo. Aba sa ba no ni bo na lo, fa po lu ku, na ni bo nu ni ki. Mkuwe, ayena no ru ku, na sa ya wa na so si ebi bo bo ni. Pakoa po, oye ba ije na ba wa, ato ya. Ayewa, we tiya ba prekya box. Wele wechi, ike na sae de ke no ru ku. Fa po ku chagie, tiye chag box, na wa lo fu po le si de ya. Number one, fa po outo, tiye box, lessin di be ba, na na lo si mo wa na, to we de de ba eh baby. Ni bo 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 lo po lozo. Opwe se na ni bo ya na agani, ru no so, ade ru, ade ru miya ni, oi ya be ba ina bambo, kaywa ni bo. Uwe na yo, uwe na yo, uwe na yo. Oye na wa ta po yo o kuma, bo bo ya na ka wa ta kia, ya ju ra di jo, la di jo amaka. Oma iki ku lepa, ife ni ye, record ya, de na NCDU office. Eje office in secretary, awa kota, record, go see. Oppona wa, oye mano, moni mano, na na loe si mo wa, mano ke no ma kee ba na bo, katiya ya, we po bo ni di wa na lo ni bo. Wele eku ni ke si o kuma, opu le si o ku, wele na na fu ni ba ni. Ya ma po lo, na ba eje, the history of ni bo. History may not be kind to such person or people. Ato kan kele siya ni ni me ya ree ina. Mani si na pa kuero, mani si na ba kuero, ah we ke ne, omo omo na. Makana ma de ra po iwe ni no ebe ta, de ba na ma ni, all sacrifice for. Wele na si na wa de lo, oyo wa de leba tata, mwa. Wele ke le, wele ke le ku, ni de la committee ba dia wa wa lo wa. Ah we ke le ba cha, all sacrifice for ni bo. Wele na seze, ka tuku, gozi ni bo. Gozi omo wa po ni bo ni ne, mani na lepa, mani na no repa, na ro. De ni bo, de bo. People, people, are you gonna see to our situation?
No.
People, they talk about self over there. Ato kanwa, oye omo wa, oye kanwa, go de ya de, B R P S, ato kanwa ni bo, ofa de bo. Ma ato anana ka, go to N P S. Oe se, ama ni bo, ayele, wa wa. Ta na atu, ke ti we diya ne po wa na li, osin owo le ni be le, okeke ku, osin owo le ni be le. Why I'm with N P S, we secretary, we PT, we fakas secretary, we version, ma na tata, we iliyemina, omo ta noya de kuka ya, we we ni bo. Owe na wa na wa wa, ta na lele wa na, le wele ke ma, I'm supposed to tell you thought. You, aman, is that the case?
Okay.
My name, I'm not in the army. But this is a church, eh de le bo. People, people, boyen, boyen, thank you, please, boyen, myself. Gantu. Oye amla gantu.
For time ni me bo ye. The first constitution eh de de ni bo, nineteen eighty-four. I draft eh eh, makana wa, after the meeting, makana we lo, oh suja. Eh we se motra, we dra, eh to la po ba, na fa se. Siye na eh le kasiya, eh, eh, eh. To te ku se lo na jobo. Eh P S, eh le, eh we ko po ni. Oh, N P S, I S out. N P S, ote ba ne bo, na kwea, eh bossa go meliosi, eh di diu. Oye amaka yes authority na ni. Papa say you, had to fight it to everybody. One year can be you. Even one na lo, na, na, awa. N P S, a group date. Omo no ye we ma we se ba ya yo. De di ke bo, ya problem, eh bossa po na di. Akama ma ro bo ya.
Kapa se na, mogo de na yo lo, I treat you good guy, so yo so. Jalunu, jalunu. People, eh you must be from, na ka ni bo. Eh people, eh we na ju to like to ni bo. Asamo, doctor, Valenbe, I pray you, buhutu na ni bo. The second national, you preach you of ni bo, gas na suspect, na suspect, de la ni opo se. Ay, ju mo bo na, na ndo, ato me yo tu preach you had a joke. Makana, omo omo de, talk and let them saw ni bo. Ato me di preach you, you really really na ni bo ta ta na wa. Eh ya o de, cross town na po di wekunispe na wa. And ever see a wekunispe na di po ta ta na wa. Eh rote ya na wa, aman disa me to go.
Go se, you go, people.
You pe, people, give me pen about peace, give me pen about. You pe, eh ju eh ju bo na. Ato me yo, shoot by sir, people have to buy the door. S A N, we do respect. And no me, manna wa, no me, my family. In December two thousand and eight, onawa yo grateful na, I quote, and I had to admit it. Olo ni bo na ba tata, olo ni bo. Ife la ya, me di ni bo na wa, ne pa na wa. Na je, eh be ka de global na wa for the boundaries. So, eh be na wa, eh ba pa de sae eh be jo. People, so na, ma we, eh actually ma, so wa le ma, so, apa fa di yo. Ife pe, eh be ka de anga, eh na ba na wa, makana eh we fa na na wa. Ni de wa na wa, so, ife pe, eh be de muwa nde muwa. You guys to do no wa na na po, de le sae no bo ni. Now, we want to go, S A N, Africa. Eh ba la ya, committee ni na lo wa. Na no ni bo na committee ya. People, ana ne ma, ana la press eh na ni.
I am twice. Waku.
In January two thousand and twelve, and then, war has, war has, war cool on da. Eh si la ke po cool on da. In January two thousand and ten, asa wo mo, war on da.
Oh, no, happen. So, oko wa, go le bo.
Aba, aba, people, eh de press ne ba na wa. De press ne ba, the sun nationaliya penis, and eh, and see eh, after, eh, 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 you say you too, eh so eh, Patakula. So people, ah, eh you say eh, eh you say you, she go no death, eh kota ni. Mr. Victor Thomas Carter, Patia ka ro ba di, so may my comely, she pu si la no wa. Asa eh lo wa ba se de. She kiya na na ka, di go na wa, oh, oh, po eki biye me, eh be eh be. Committee eh bo, eh we pa na ba recommend eh shantoni bo. Nei ha de, come so proper send eh ha. To ah de de ba eh, oh ni bo lands, aman na ni bo ni nebe. Oke bo, to find out history, so ke badan of all the lands, kama ta na na, ni ne, ni bo we, na ba onda. Oke to, to ah de ba eh, sixteen land applications in various parts, practice evolve and set up procedures. Kama le eke la ka, and na la le go di le la ka. Number four, to de da lae, eh, 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 control, and you observe land, the whole part of ni bo. Kama wa, K C L A na, eh, eh, ni bo, K C K A mini, ni de ma de la na, ba na ni bo. Number five, to assess all the application applications, eh, preparation with the rules, and plan committee. Kama eh, 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 the person eh, 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 shot, eh, 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 levels, with the planning committee. Number seven, to comply, prepare all the papers, eh, give you plans, maps, survey, as soon as, eh, 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 project items, of ni bo land. They will not win the bossa ni bo, ni nebe la, and about the ni bo, ni de pedo po le ono. And finally, to advise of all of the issues, letting the land map us, we can foresee that, eh, 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 for the issues. Who should have been there, ni bo sa, eh, 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 eh. Now, committee eh lo no bo, eh, eh. War has, kanda, war has, people. Omo ni bo, senorito, niye li ba ke ala, and ayeh le wo ni bo. Thank you very much, eh, eh. Each other, my brothers, na da, niye lo ru, and eh, eh, you from that cha eh. People, ite me eki ku na, na we ba di si na wa. Ah, we say eh ye, ta ye si na wa. Asa wo mo, eh, eh, na, na, soon da da, nee po yo na eh le eh, 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 eh. Asa two thousand and twelve, I was a tiny boy, publicist eh, 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 eh. You can't lose the mission eh eh. You were seven now, na ye, eh, 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 eh. Wee de la pa ni bo. All about, eh, 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 eh. Si maya you, eh, 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 eh. All eh, 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 eh. Only eh, 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 join industry, senior eh, 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 kinder eh, right round. People, eh, I had my couple of friends between, Tomato Yobi, and Gabriel Olim, my grandfather, and all the reference party there, and I was married in ni bo, in nineteen thirty-six. In nineteen thirty-six, each other, nice address, eh, eh, eh. To those who, not exactly, eh, eh, eh. Asa wo na, ni bo, people eh, 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 eh. Have water, we watch you, we po na eh, 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 eh. When I do shoes everywhere, eh, 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 oh, my, eh, 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 oh, do you something? Oh, my, eh, 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 the man you should precisely, with all due respect, be your friend, she pee eh, eh, eh. She pee eh, 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 eh. He say, he say, eh, 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 eh. I know eh, eh, eh. Oh, eh, 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 eh. But eh, 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 eh. I want to understand, what you are trying to. See the, eh, 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 eh. People, eh, 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 eh. Eh, 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 eh. 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 People, eh, 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 eh. Thank you very much, eh, eh. Never know. And hey, no, no, if you will, if you will, two thousand and one, not every one here. Oh, my, eh, 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 eh. And you teach, eh, 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 eh. 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 No, no, eh, 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 eh. They now do a good song, eh. Ife nee eh, 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 eh. Eh, 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 eh. Kama wo pa tu, kuwa na na. Eh, 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 eh. No, no, so, no, so. Niibo Niibo Panma, panma Panma, panma Panma, panma Panma, panma Panma, panma Panma, panma Niibo, panma, panma Panma, panma Panma Panma, panma Panma, panma Niibo I'm a good person, you are a bad person Niibo 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 Panma, panma Panma, panma Panma, panma Panma, panma Panma, panma Panma, panma Niibo, panma, panma Panma Panma, panma Panma, panma Niibo I'm a good person, you are a bad person Niibo 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 Si Niibo Niibo I need to go to the toilet eh I need to go to the toilet eh Niibo Niibo Now, you are You are my cover You are a good person You are a good You are not a good person eh You are not a good person eh You are a good person eh You are not a good person eh You are a good person eh You are a good person eh She might be You are a good person eh You are a good person eh You are a good person eh I don't know You are a good person eh I tell you Um You are not a good person eh You are not a good person eh You are not a good person eh Say it's a Niibo You are a good You are a good Say it's a Niibo You are a good person eh I'm a good I said you should be like a man eh I'm a good man eh I'm a good person eh I'm a good person eh You are a good person eh No, 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 we eh Niibo I love you eh Niibo 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 He ain't do what I want me to hear I was a Indian Niibo He ain't use I want to see a dear Why join Why join You wait a day for you You use, you wait You wait a day for you Niibo And if Niibo Is okay, is okay Olo ya ka Niibo Niibo And you are not allowed Niibo And you are not allowed Why na Guarantee Niibo Guarantee, people guarantee no law eh Guarantee no law eh Oh, oh, the man Salazar That big eh Zai to to I got a new thing eh Niibo Niibo I guarantee lah Guarantee no haas Guarantee no haas Niibo I want you to You are a good person eh Ya ho Ya ho Uh You are a good person eh You are a good person eh I'm a good person eh Niibo Niibo You are a good Ta wo eh, ta wo eh And I want to share our process and message To the world I know what I have This I will marry you to the city eh I will be true eh Man, before more, you will be married to Africa Be eh The second Go bro eh Then I'm a good eh I can't imagine eh I can't ever
Go raise you though The number of points I, which I explained though Very briefly Uke is easy eh Conoce Na problem Eh we no Ma niyo Bomoma Asio kwan Asio kwan ni go ku Aburezioku Kamana Kamana Go ku na bo problem Negative Go po eh, you say bo no problem Ano ra mia Uke eh po Ifo ku lu Eh utera Makana omoa obo na Wa po ta no mie Gajelo ku dozi Omoa owo eh du eh, me ta chao na obo na ofo ma Oh eh, we na ta Oh eh, we na ta Ule eh, grace eh No, no, eh And often eh you maga ita eh Wey na omoa no I'm only a bona ku ku lu Amagani ru Then again Go ku no maka Committee S A S A up On the issue of trauma workplace Ezeioku MPS Set up such a committee The committee is also Waita report To MPS Waita po eh, that report From what are their recommendations Open see I love the meeting The way set here up Another committee in two thousand and two For the party And the group met of Awalan And I'm a The member of the Of Alaba The member of the For the member of the official committee Away begin a meeting, we say Now, some of them Are the committee Not the one they do in fact Have a new committee PG Niibo We send back Now they finish go their job That na This one is A different ballgame And the niyo Number three Number three Ezeioku na By the hope in the hour Epo na ge eh bito From the boundaries Man na Udu nee anya Olo afuna All the boundary lands of Niibo Na nda wa to dia eh na zia so ke ta Oh eh, pakalo Oh eh, pakalo If eh, eh we na ka Di wedding so much So, by setting up this committee Opuna obo de kusie oku tata Situation changing And ya kwan na ga ra we pu eh We pu ya lepa, if eh, we eh eh Omoa ni no ye wrong with it And eh, we changes Then eh, adjustments And situations change Omoa ro, uke eh ku lu Po nya, uchi Niyo buke eh du eh poa ga eh Uke ah eh eh me ke ta Opuna eh kusie nya Niibo we decide eh Then eh, modification eh Ah, yeti ma ka eh ku ku we eh Eh me, I'm a bad modification Go to no eh agani Then finally Finally Ano ro di eh Ude you too po Makana Makana We po eh, people eh Kusie oh Wey si Ni eh eh ta Bo, half percent eh And you are a You are a good After You are guarantee Go raise you though The number of points I, which I explained though Very briefly Uke is easy eh Conoce Na problem Eh we no Ma niyo Bomoma Asio kwan Asio kwan ni go ku Aburezioku Kamana Kamana Go ku na bo problem Negative Go po eh, you say bo no problem Ano ra mia Uke eh po Ifo ku lu Eh utera Makana omoa obo na Wa po ta no mie Gajelo ku dozi Omoa owo eh du eh, me ta chao na ofo ma
Niibo Uh No, no Uh, niibo Uh Man na You see eh, come over I want you to see eh And you have to I'm a good person eh Yes, me ti Or you have to I tell you eh I don't like committee eh But Family meeting eh, what eh, eh be eh Niibo, niibo, niibo Omoa eh, niibo, jalunu Omoa eh, jalunu You know eh, I'm no no You know eh, I'm jalunu Jalunu eh, eh I don't know I don't know Jalunu Eh, eh, eh Eh, eh, eh I need to go I need to go Makana I need to go I need to go eh I need to go eh